Good evening. Eric Ward will need you to be able to be seen. Thank you. There we go. All right.
Just waiting for us to get started.
Mary down here. That's impersonal. Okay. Everybody, everybody ready? Good evening, Chief. All right. I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole September 7th, 2021, Raytown City Hall. I'm sorry, Raytown Board of Aldermen to order at 6:02 PM. And first thing on, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Henry, can you call the role, please?
Alderman Memes.
Present.
Alderman Hayden.
Here.
Alderman Ward.
Here.
Alderman Emerson.
Here.
Alderman Scott.
Here.
Alderman Bill Van Busker.
He will be late, and so will Mary Jane Van Busker.
Alderman Walters.
Here.
Alderman Major.
He is going to be running late.
Alderman Myers.
Here.
Alderman Mary Jane Van Busker.
She's also running late.
Thank you.
All right. I'll first ask for the approval of the August 17th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Do I hear a motion?
Back end.
You make sure that it turns green and make say it again.
So moved.
Okay, I don't think.
Second.
Second by Ms. Memes. First by Rita Hayden. All right. Let's do this by affirmation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just make sure your microphone's on when you're casting your ballot. They couldn't hear you. It didn't pick it up. No, it needs to be recorded. There you go. Thank you. That's the way we do that.
I have to abstain because I wasn't here last meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. All right, moving on to asset management. What do you have for us, Jose Leon?
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Aldermen. Really excited to provide you with this presentation of the culmination of the work that our Public Works Department, engineering staff, administrative staff have been working on with our engineers of GBA. We have a couple of those present with us this evening as I talk through this. So I'm gonna get this presentation started. Bear with me. Giving me an error. Participant screen sharing. Got it. Thank you. All right. Okay, so as I stated just a minute ago, this is a review presentation of the work we have been doing with George Butler Associates. Little over a year ago, you all gave us the authority to work with them on identifying a strategy of INI reduction of sanitary sewer system in the city. We're gonna just do a quick review of what INI is, what the cost of INI looks like, work we've done with GBA over the last year, focus on our holistic approach to addressing this issue for the city. Look at our seven-year CIP that we've developed, and specifically look at our 2022 sanitary sewer project. If you recall, you kind of got a little bit of hint of this at our last presentation on our 2021 project. All right, so what is? There you go. So what is INI? INI basically stands for inflow and infiltration. It can happen a couple of different ways, several different ways, rather. It's basically when groundwater gets into our sanitary sewer system. It can get into the system by way of, you know, the condition of the system, cracks, holes, what have you, man in manholes and sewer mains. It can be a specific resource, direct resource from somebody's roof drain connected to their sanitary sewer lateral and/or a French drain. We fortunately do not have a cross-connection system. Stormwater does not connect to our sanitary sewer system, so that's good. But basically, INI can happen several different ways, most of which happens through the condition of our sanitary sewer system itself. But private sources, as I said earlier, such as roof drain connections, foundation drains, French drains, what have you, sometimes are connected to our system as well. We know that for a fact. So do we have issues with INI? These are photos that you've seen already, but, you know, basically, this shows the condition of a part of our sanitary sewer system that we're aware of. This is photos from our 2021 sanitary sewer project. As you can see, you know, in these holes where, you know, this pipe has collapsed, really, you know, groundwater, rainwater comes into a sanitary sewer system by way of this hole, cracks. You get another nice hole here in our system. So, I mean, the short answer is yes. We know we have issues in our, in our system. Do we have issues continued? These are photos from last year, May of 2020, when we had a pretty significant rainstorm in Raytown. This is a manhole around 59th and Raytown Road, or trafficway, rather. You can see it's overflowing. And then this is one of our EQ basins where it's basically up to capacity. And that's what it's, that's what it's for, is to store sewer water. But in this case, you know, when we have large rainstorms, it fills up our sewer system pretty rapidly. So it's an INI issue. So this is how we pay for sewer treatment. Just a real quick review. Our city is broken up into oh, 75%, 25% if you will. The green is Little Blue Valley Sewer District. The red, or pink, rather, is KCMO. We do not have sewer treatment plants in our community, in the city, so we pay those agencies to treat our sanitary sewer water. This is just a review of the budgets, the payments over the last, actually, these are payments over the last four years, and these are the budgets for the upcoming fiscal year. So our budget moving into 2122 fiscal year is over $4.6 million for those agencies to treat our sewer water. Now, the reason why I think this is important to point out is because both of these agencies, the rates, they fluctuate, okay? The rates, the bill fluctuates for us, and it fluctuates based on the amount of gallons of sewer water that they are treating for us. Okay, so the more INI, the more gallons, right? KCMO, we're negotiating a new service agreement with them, and they've already let us know, hey, just want to make you aware, in this new agreement, we are gonna have penalties, fees for INI coming to our sewer, because it costs them money as well. So I just wanted to kind of highlight what this looks like from a financial perspective from the city. So this is a kind of an example. This is a graph from Little Blue Valley Sewer District, where, and this is that storm last year, actually, where you can see around 8 o'clock in the morning to about 1:15, 1:13, rather, and we had some rain, and then all of a sudden it started raining really hard, and you can see these spikes. One of my arrows are pointing out is spikes in our, the flow meter, right? So the water's getting into our system. We expect sewer water, but it's also a collection of INI in our system, and you see these spikes in their, in their data here. And of course, you know, you can see these big, large spikes as well. So the tighter our system is, tighter meaning limited INI, the less fast spiking you will see. You'll see more of a gradual rise, right? Here, you're seeing just a quick write-up, right, because we have, we have INI in our system. So the bigger the INI, the bigger the bill. That's really the picture I'm trying to paint for you all here. I think you all know this. So what did GBA help us out with? Well, we brought on GBA last year to help us determine a plan to minimize our INI. What they did is they reviewed studies from our Bartlett West Studies from 2003 to 2006, and the preceding projects that the city did a couple of years after that. They also reviewed the Burns and McDonald rate study that they had for the sewer rate, which also advised for flow metering recommendations. We worked with staff to update the GIS information for accuracy. Our GIS information that Bartlett West really put together at the end of 2006, we had not taken the time over several years to update it. We made, we did things to our sewer system, made improvements, changed a couple of things, changed the line here or there, moved a manhole, what have you. We never updated our GIS, so GBA really helped us capture that information and update our GIS. They also reviewed the NER analysis of the condition of our sewer system, which I presented to you all last time. They took some information from existing flow meters, reviewed our maintenance and operation history, and also reviewed our sanitary sewer backup data. So there's a tremendous amount of time and effort that GBA spent getting familiar with, not just our sewer system, but issues in our sewer system, all to point a direction for us to move forward with. So what do we know? We know that our highest INI sewer sheds based out of the Bartlett West Studies are White Oak, Woodson Center, and Wildwood North and South. We also know that NER's analysis of our, of the sewer system in these areas are very concentrated. Lot of pockets of high-risk, very high-risk sewer mains and manholes. We now know that approaching this from more of a holistic approach, which we'll talk about here in a second, will really help us address the INI and really make sure that the dollars that we're spending to improve our sewer system, or tighten it up really, are being spent, I think, accurately for the community. So, again, as we lower our INI, the city receives the benefit, the citizens receive the benefit at the end of the day, right, because we're not paying as much, not needing to budget as much for cost of treatment. That's, that's the theory. So what we've done, and this is what we'll talk, we're gonna talk about, is we've established what we're calling a preliminary engineering phase for our projects moving forward. This is to specifically identify INI sources, verify city data as accurate prior to design. So what is the holistic approach? Well, basically, it's establishing a phase that uses resources to identify the private INI spoke about, you know, our city's friends, our people's drains, French drains, roof drains, connected to our sewer system, to their laterals, ultimately to our sewer system. Identify any other sources of INI. We're gonna get in CCTV data to accurately point out, you know, collapsed pipe areas where we might just need a point repair here or there to fix the issue. If there's a complete line replacement that needs to be made, if there's buried manholes, which we found in our 2021 project. So we're gonna, we're gonna utilize a number of these sources here in this preliminary engineering phase, is what we're calling it, moving forward. Ultimately, what we're, what we're doing is we're taking what we know now as the leakiest sewer sheds, using NER's data overlap on those sewer sheds, so we can identify the very high, high-risk sewer mains and manholes, and addressing it that way moving forward. That's what this looks like. So I've kind of talked about some of this already, but really, what, wanting to show you on this map is, on the left map, is what NER's risk scores look like. The darker the color, red is very high risk, the orange is high risk. And if you look at the areas of the red, as I said, they're concentrated areas, kind of neighborhoods, you'll also notice that over here, where we have our sewer sheds, these are our leakiest sewer sheds right here. This brown, green, and purple. Those are our leakiest sewer sheds right there. So this information lines up with what we, what we know now. So we're gonna use this information to create projects. We can't fix it all at one time, but we're gonna fix neighborhoods at a time that we can, that we can afford, according to our budget every year. This is what we've been working on as staff. We are gonna implement temporary sewer metering on a downhole, downstream, rather, downstream manhole. The most downstream manhole we could find in that concentration of sewer mains and manholes. We're gonna set up a temporary flow metering to meter that about 90 days prior to construction, do the work that we need to do, meter it post-construction, so we can really capture and identify how much lower we've made the flow in that system. I think that that will really speak to the work that we're doing and the dollars we're spending here for not just us, but for the community as a whole. All right, so that's kind of our approach, and now you're probably wondering, well, what's, what's, what's the project? And I think you all have this information. But essentially, this map here on the left is what we've laid out as our, we're calling it a seven-year approach, seven-year CIP. Our 2021 project that you all approved already, that's not included in the seven years. That's just a project we're doing already. But that's up here mapped for you at the very top north of the end of the city. You can see how much work is being done. The project that we would like to move forward with in 2022 that we're recommending is this Area 1, which is Wildwood South. Area 1 is right in here. Right in here. And then you can see the areas after that. We're calling them areas. We didn't call them years, because this can change year to year, based on what we can afford to do and information that we receive, right? Things could happen in one area or another, and we may need to adjust accordingly. But at the end of the day, our CIP, let me figure out how to move this. Our CIP is an affordable range, as I spoke to earlier. It's about 17,000 linear feet to 29,000 linear feet. Altogether, it's 154,000 linear feet of our network, which approximates to about 17 and a half percent total network. If you include the project we're doing, we're getting ready to embark on this year, it's 20% of the city's sewer network over the next seven years. I think that's a huge accomplishment to the city, to the staff. I think it's just a huge accomplishment. Again, working in the preliminary INI investigation, engineering design, preliminary engineering, go into design. We'll bring that back to you at another date to begin design. We'll construct it. The project ranged from about $1.8 million to $3.3 million. Those are conservative estimates based on today's numbers. That's what the range is for each of these projects. And again, using combination of the NER risk scoring and the heaviest INI sewer sheds for prioritization. The 2022 sewer location, as I spoke about earlier specifically, it's about 29,000 linear feet, 147 manholes. We're gonna use a number of strategies to identify INI in the preliminary engineering phase. The total cost for construction engineering is about $3.2 million, $3.3 million. Our preliminary engineering is about $240,000, which is, I am, we're gonna bring to you this evening at the Board of Aldermen meeting. Again, post-construction flow monitoring will be performed to measure reduction of flow throughout the area, and post-CTV data will be collected to ensure the work is performed properly, which I think is important. And that's all I have for this presentation. I'm open to any questions.
Oh, hold on. Yes, I do have a question. On the financial end, how long does our sewer bonds, our bonding ability right now, how long does that run? On the funding?
Your question is how long?
How long? I know we have sewer bonds that are, I don't know the life of them. I don't know what's left on them.
I think a little less than 10 years. One is 20, there's three left, like 2027, 2028 timeframe.
Okay, not, I was paying attention, but I really don't remember. Do we have enough to finish the entire city with that life, those 10 years?
Enough of those bonds?
Yes.
No, those bonds are all been spent.
They've all been spent, okay. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Mr. Murray? Okay, so Jose, I guess the gist of it is, this is the equivalent of, you know, not sealing your house during the winter, and air gets in the doors and the windows, kind of same, same thing. So this is the research phase of this. Are we gonna continually update this? Or is this, it's a seven-year plan, so in 2028, are we gonna have to revisit this, or is this just gonna be a constant update?
I think, you know, our goal is to revisit this every, yeah, every year. We're gonna revisit this and, you know, update the information as we receive it.
That's, that's what I wanted to hear. I think we've done a lot of studies back in the past, and they weren't ever updated, and that kind of spiraled us into a world of hurt that we're in right now. So I'm gonna throw out a question that is off the wall, but kind of relevant. Would it be feasible, cost feasible, or financially feasible if we were to build our own treatment plant?
I know, that's a big question.
I know. We would just built theirs for 335 million, but it's one of the most sophisticated plants in the Midwest, if not the country. So I don't know what kind of payback period that would be, and, yeah, you know, at the end of the day, we get to control our own rates if we do that, but that, I just wanted to throw it out there.
Yeah, I think in order to find the answer to that question, it's gonna use a word that you don't want to hear anymore, not study. Because it will, it will take a study, feasibility study for, for us to properly analyze what that looks like for the city.
I get it. And that's, it's not a cheap project, and you guys want to do it the right way from, from the get-go, so thank you.
We used to do our own a long time ago. That's why we did Little Blue Valley Sewer District, yeah. But that was years ago.
Back in the Roman days where they had lead pipes.
That's back when they had the open pits and everything else, yeah. That's what we did, but it wasn't very efficient, so. Appreciate you asking that question, though. Okay. Anybody else? See nobody? Did you have something?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't push the right.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I think that doing this, we're finally addressing problems that we've had for so many years, and I'm very pleased that this is going forward.
I think over a period of time, it'll definitely show a difference in, in what kind of money we're putting out all the time for for rainwater and stuff that gets into our system and causes us to have to pay a higher price effects, sitting on that board. I see every month that Raytown, for as small as we are, we have a pretty high rate of flow because of that. Appreciate it. All right, let's move on to the right-of-way ordinance revisions. Stephanie Boyce, Public Works Assistant Director, what do you have for us?
Well, Stephanie gets it together. One of the things I asked Jose, and we've talked about, was to look at our right-of-way ordinance, and also its permitting, things of that sort. As we all know, with the amount of utility construction, public-private partnerships that go in your right-of-way, we wanted to make sure and look at if we're more up to date, or what items we need to do to be more up to date. So Stephanie has reviewed those, and will give a presentation regarding our next steps on that.
Thank you. I'm trying to get this so I can see. Good evening, Mayor and Board. So tonight, like Damon said, we gathered a team of staff here to look at our current right-of-way ordinance and determine what kind of needed to be changed. So a little bit of a background. In our past and present dealings with the local utility agencies, we kind of took a look at it and proposed some amended language change written in Chapter 36, and that addresses our city's right-of-way. So the changes are, that we proposed are to better protect the city, its infrastructure, its citizens by increasing bond amounts to sufficiently cover the cost of restorations. Our changes will also provide a more efficient way of processing our and inspecting permits, and then we also are proposing some fee changes that will accurately recuperate staff's time and resources. So I'm gonna go through each of the changes. There's not too many of them. The first one we have essentially is removing the word promptly, so it, in Section 36-127, it talks about the use of the right-of-way. And it states, "All earth material, all earth materials, sidewalks, paving, crossing utilities, and other public improvements, or improvements of any kind damaged or removed by the right-of-way user shall be fully repaired or replaced promptly." We're removing promptly and adding "prior to the permit expiration date." Promptly is pretty vague. It leaves it open to interpretation, and sometimes things aren't getting done promptly, so we want to make sure that we added that language to ensure that, that things do get done prior to the permit expiration date. Right now, our expiration date is 30 days from the time their permits issued. We're going to extend that to 60 days to kind of give, especially some of the bigger utility agencies, a little bit of a longer time to finish their projects. You know, things come up. Sometimes they don't always get those done. So that's the first change. Let's see. Second one is Section 36-132, and this is the permit requirement. Down towards the bottom, it talks about, well, we removed as soon as possible. We're just trying to tighten this paragraph up, so we removed as soon as possible, got rid of that, and just says that, oh, this is for emergency work. Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. So a right-of-way permit is required for emergency situations. We understand that these agencies or property owners, if they have an emergency, are going to go ahead and repair the work, repair the issue, do the repair work as soon as possible, not to cause issues, but they still need to get a permit, and so we're asking them to obtain that permit during the next city business day. So this is just a little bit more clarification, removing that as soon as possible and changing working to business. One of the bigger changes that we're proposing is in Section 36-134. This covers a liability insurance, performance, and maintenance bond requirement. Right now, our applicants can obtain an annual bond, and our municipal code determines, or puts that at a $50,000 bond. And recently, you know, working with our larger utility agencies, who are performing multiple projects annually, staff came together and determined that this $50,000 bond was not sufficient to perform the restoration work within these large projects. So in discussing ways that we can make sure that we have a bond that's large enough, we determined that an amount set by the city engineer or his designee would be sufficient. And in order for us to look at that, it would be based on the agency's annual projects. So generally, utility agencies will give us a list of what they're proposing to do for the year. We would require them to also provide an engineer's estimate for the work that they're going to perform for that year. And that would set a precedence and an amount for their annual bond. So this section changes that 50,000 to an amount determined by the city engineer. And that's based on, like I said, their list of work and an engineer's estimate. And that information will be detailed in an application kind of checklist and instructions to the, to the applicant. Okay, the next one is section 36-135, and this is for the right-of-way permit fees. So in letter B or in section B, we taught, we added a traffic control fee. So oftentimes with some of our permits, an applicant may need to have traffic control, a lane closure, something that will safely secure their work site. And so we're proposing to add a traffic control fee. And then in addition, we are removing the degradation fee and we're changing that to a street or sidewalk cut. So, and that's to accurately kind of get that use and, and the fees to that. And we'll discuss the fees here shortly. We're also adding that permit fees are non-refundable. A lot of work goes into our staff, just even taking in a permit, reviewing it, putting it into our system. So we wanted to add that. And then again, for section F below, we talk about waving instead of degradation, we changed it to street and sidewalk cut. And then section 36-137 permitted work. In this section, right now, we ask the permit tier, the applicant, to notify the city no less than three working days in advance of any work that would require a street closure. And so we're adding an extra week. We're making that 10 days just to give sufficient notice to the city, to our residents, our citizens, to police, fire, bus, so that they have enough time to plan their routines and their callouts. And then we're also asking applicants to, we're asking them to use a digital message board like the one in this photo to notify the public of the proposed closures. Then in section F below, we added some more information to the non-emergency work section, just requiring that if any work is done after hours on the weekends, that the applicant would post a deposit to cover any kind of inspection time. And then we would draw from that deposit, return any money that's left over. Section 36-138, the right-of-way repair and restoration. In this picture, you can see that there is a long line of patches along this roadway. And so this, this change is proposing or requiring the applicant to resurface a portion of the street damaged by multiple excavation points. So rather than having these patches down this long stretch, we would require the applicant to resurface that whole portion of that lane. And in addition, if the points are closer than, than 10 feet, the excavation areas would be made into one area. Just a nicer surface for our residents to drive down. And then just the change from degradation to street sidewalk cut. So now we're moving on to the permit fees. So the permit fees are intended to recover any costs that are put forth by staff time and any resources through the right-of-way management process. So the following slides, I'll show you a breakdown of the fees from our surrounding jurisdictions, a breakdown of our current fees versus our proposed fees, and analysis that we did of staff time. And then an example of a couple different permit types that we issue here. So I looked at five, five different agencies surrounding us. All of them are different. I mean, nobody, no city, no jurisdiction has a consistent way that they assess or collect fees. So you can see that some have a base fee that might be per address, some have a base fee that's per 200 feet, some per 660 feet, some have a flat rate, some have street cut fees, a couple have traffic control, more than half require a bond or a deposit. And then others have a reinspection fee. So there was really no way to gauge and compare. What I did at the bottom was kind of just did an average. So if we took, you know, a base fee, a street cut fee and traffic control, that average would be about $185. So moving on to the city's fees, right now, our existing fee is $75 per project. This fee doesn't include any kind of traffic control, solely an administrative fee. We have a street degradation fee that ranges from a flat rate to a certain amount based on the street age and, and certain items like that. It's really kind of tedious to calculate. And that ranges from $8.50 up. So what we're proposing is to change our base fee to $100 for 200 contiguous feet. Traffic control, adding a traffic control fee of $40, that covers our staff time for reviewing these traffic control plans, temporary traffic control. And this is not needed for every permit. So if the permit doesn't require traffic control, then that fee would not be assessed. And then changing that degradation fee to a street slash sidewalk cut fee for a residential area would be 50. Any other area such as a collector, any of those major thoroughfares would be 100. And then again, that's only assessed on permits where there are street or sidewalk cuts. And there's a difference in cost for residential versus the other due to pavement thickness, traffic and depth of utility lines. So a residential cut's going to involve less, less time than something that's major. And then this is a breakdown of our fees based on those that are involved with our permitting process. Right now, we have our engineering inspector, we have our city engineer, we have our administrative assistant who all kind of help with this process. So overall, the average time spent, if you're including traffic control, is $148 per permit. If you take that traffic control out, it's about $108, $103, right around there. And so that's where, that's where we got our fee of $100, our base fee. These are some examples of fees or of permit types with the associated fees, proposed fees. So one of a bigger project where a utility agency is coming in, they're digging in the street to lay something, whether it's gas line, fiber or something like that. They, if, it's based on 2,000 linear feet. With 30 street cuts, five sidewalk cuts and a traffic control plan, the proposed total permit fees would be $4,540. Right now, we're not capturing that. That's about what the city's cost would be, right, right in that range. On a residential driveway approach, where they're simply replacing, repairing and replacing their driveway approach, their permit fee would be $100. There's no reason for traffic control and there's no street or sidewalk cuts. So that's going to be just that flat rate of $100, where the city's cost is right around $108. So what do these changes mean for the city? We are adding added protection for the city and its residents. We're ensuring quality restoration to the city's right-of-way. Another picture at the top where you can see several street cuts. We're increasing our cost to sufficiently cover staff time and staff resources that are used in this process. And then, you know, should, should this be approved, we would coordinate with our utility agencies regarding the changes, the expectations moving forward. In addition, we're looking at hosting a utility coordination meeting, maybe quarterly, just so that our utility agencies are aware what city projects are going on. And we're aware of what utility agency projects are going on so that we can coordinate those better and make sure that if there's a big gas repair and it's scheduled for after, you know, a city street resurfacing project, we want to make sure that we coordinate that. So we don't go and resurface a street and they come in six months later and cut it up. So we really want to work closer and better with our utility agencies. And then some of the future improvements that are coming along with this is our City Works implementation. We've been working really hard on implementing or working on the backend of the City Works, which is our asset management program. And we're going to be working towards, you know, moving our permits online and then also providing tablets for our field crew. So not just our public works field crew, but also inspector. So when he's out on site, he has everything he needs at his fingertips. He can take pictures and upload them directly in there. So it'll really be an efficient, efficient way of doing things once this is implemented. So with that, you have any questions?
Unshare your screen so I can see everybody. There we go. Mr. Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm sorry, the presenter's name was again?
Stephanie.
Stephanie Boyce.
Ms. Boyce, thank you very much. I couldn't see you when you were talking. So have, have a couple. First of all, those, those labor rates seem awfully low to me. Are those fully loaded?
Um, they're probably in the middle of the base rate and the fully loaded rate.
Okay. And is there a reason that we don't try to recapture the loaded rates or?
These were kind of the rates that I, I found and, and was given. And I mean, we could do a little bit further analysis. Dig a little bit deeper for that full loaded, loaded rate, and I can confirm that.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I mean, I've got no heartburn about asking the, the street users to pay the actual cost. And I'd hate to think we're leaving 10 or 15% on the table. And the other question I have is, and you may not be aware of this, but KCMO has recently undertaken a new street cut and right-of-way ordinance. And as a result of that, the local investor-owned utilities and municipal utilities that serve in Kansas City have held a number of meetings to coordinate on this. Have you, are you aware of any of that or?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay. So I, have you done likewise and reached out to the, to the local utilities to start the conversations on this? And I'll be honest with you, this, this looks like a decent, these look like good changes and it's much better than what KCMO is implementing. But have you reached out to start that conversation yet?
With our utility agencies, not at this time. So we are looking at having better coordination with our utilities. Like I said at the end, having those quarterly updates. You know, ideally, we would like to get GIS layers of our utility agencies so that we can overlay those with our current city projects so that we have a better idea of what, you know, what their projects are versus what, what our projects are. And then really just work with them.
Well, I think that's a great approach going forward, but I'm talking more about soliciting input kind of as to these changes to see if these changes makes sense to all the utilities. Because I know, and the KCMO ordinance was completely different and, but there was a lot of heartburn about some of their proposals and we've reached, you know, agreements to treat things a little differently. And, and you know, one example where it might be beneficial for Raytown is it's not just the quarterly meetings, which we have, you know, with KCMO and other, other, you know, city. But one of the things that's come out of this is a, as a commitment between the utilities and KCMO to sit down kind of each year to look at the next two to five years projects that are budgeted so that we can start building a GIS database of, you know, anticipated projects. And that allows the city to say, okay, well, this road needs, what we see is going to have a lot of work 18 months out from now. Let's schedule that for two or three fiscal years out so that we're not, you know, running into all these things. And I, and I'm afraid that if we try and do it quarterly by that time, you know, work, if that's the only kind of time we receive that feedback, it's, it's already in the pipeline and there won't be a chance to reschedule.
Yeah, I, I didn't mean it in, in the way that we would get their, their information quarterly. Yes, we would definitely ask them for, you know, their two or three-year CIP looking forward, but then having those meetings just to touch bases.
Oh, and that's, and that's very useful. And I mean, are you familiar with Zach Sweet and Madeline Romneyes and, oh, who else do we have? DeBar Wesley, are those all people you're familiar with?
No.
Okay, so after this meeting, I, I,
I'm not, but.
After this meeting, I can email you some contact information of the different utilities that you may want to.
Go, I can get those to Mr. Ward.
Okay, that's fine too. Thank you. That, that's all I have. Thank you very much. Excellent presentation.
Mr. Walters? Yes, my question is, I think I know the answer already, but we're talking about utility costs only. We're not talking about, when it comes to driveway curb cuts and so forth as to individual property owners?
So the fees would also would also, it would be across the board. So on the slide that I showed of a sample projects for a residential driveway approach, the fee would slightly increase from the $75 to the $100.
Even if they don't take, when you say the approach, are you talking about the curb?
Yeah, yeah.
What if they, if they don't touch, what if they don't affect the curb?
Well, the approach is also the first part of the driveway. That's the first, what, six feet?
Yeah, the apron's on the right-of-way, so that they would need that, that right-of-way.
I understand. Thank you. $100?
$100.
Ms. Emerson?
Thank you, Mayor. My question was for section 36-132 on the permit requirement. You say the next city business day. What happens if it takes two days for them to come here? Does that kind of narrowing it to a very specific short time? Could you do like two days?
For the emergency work, it's already set at the next, our, our ordinance already states the next working day. We just changed the next working, working to, to business. I mean, obviously, we have a little forgiveness, but, you know, we would ultimately like to see our applicants be responsible and come get those permits immediately the next day so that we don't have to chase after them. Because that's time consuming. So we want to put the onus on them to be responsible. And say, hey, we had to do this over the weekend. We're here today to pull our permit. I mean, we, we could, we could look at, at extending that.
Certainly, my question would only be if they were still working on the project and couldn't get to the city to do this.
Generally, they would have an administrative person that comes to pull the permit while their field crews are out, outworking on the crew. I think that's generally how most agencies would work. If I'm a private homeowner and I have something wrong with my sewer lateral, then generally I would hire, well, would have to hire a plumber or contractor to come in and do that. So like I said, we, we want to put that responsibility on to, to them to come in the next business day to pull that permit.
Thank you.
So part of this is make sure that we start getting proper repair on cuts in our street so that we don't keep fighting things that we've been fighting for years.
Yes.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? All right. Anybody else have any questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment. They'll move by Ms. Janet Emerson, second by Major. Let's do this by affirmation. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone against? Okay, we are adjourned. Be back in here at seven o'clock sharp.